The City of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Good evening. Welcome to the Joint Board Meeting, Tuesday, March 8th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the board members to introduce themselves, starting from my far right, please.
John Smith, Board of Finance.
Dave Mills, City Council.
Mike Ferney, Board of Finance.
Derek Chinchelasky, Board of Finance.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Anthony Demato, City Council.
Jody Zills-Gagnon, City Council.
Gerald Tebow, Board of Finance.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Calvin Brown, City Council.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Orlando Kelfie, Board of Finance.
Town Clerk Therese Pack.
Assistant Dawn Labella.
And I'm Mayor Ken Cottkeen. Item number one.
Approval of minutes of the regular Joint Board Meeting on February 9th, 2016.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number two.
It's the consent calendar, and there are six items. Two A is to transfer $6,036 within the Public Works Operating Budget for conferences and memberships. Two B is to make an additional appropriation of $8,924 within the School Readiness Operating Budget funded by grant revenue. C is to make an additional appropriation of $286 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund funded by donations. D is to make an additional appropriation of $18,667 within the General Fund funded by Man Ross Trust revenue. E is to make an additional appropriation of $3,788 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund funded by grants and donations. And F is to make an additional appropriation of $2,000 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund for the neglected cemetery grant funded by grant revenue.
Move it. Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number three.
To make an additional appropriation of $10,960 within the Transfer Station Fund for software upgrades.
Move. Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number four.
To transfer $10,960 from the Public Works Operating Budget to operating transfers out special revenue.
Move. Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number five.
To make an additional appropriation of $68,000 within the Community Development Block Grant Fund for the sidewalk replacement project in the Summer Street area funded by program revenue. So moved.
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number six.
To approve an economic development grant to Raleigh Spring for up to $12,062.
So moved. Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number seven.
To approve an economic development grant to Benjamin International for $58,500.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number eight.
To transfer $25,000 from the General Fund Contingency Account to operating transfers out special revenue.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number nine.
To make an additional appropriation of $25,000 within the Equipment Building Syncing Fund funded by a transfer in from the General Fund for the HVAC system at DMAC.
Move it. Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number ten.
To transfer $7,800 from the General Fund Contingency Account to operating transfers out Capital Projects Fund.
So moved. Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number eleven.
To make an additional appropriation of $7,800 within the Capital Projects Fund funded by a transfer in from the General Fund for the HVAC system at DMAC.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number eleven.
Twelve. To make an additional appropriation of $10,000 within the LoCIP Fund funded by a transfer in for renovations to the BDA Conference Room.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number thirteen.
Monthly revenue and expense report presentation by the Controller.
Good evening, Mayor and Joint Board Members. Short presentation by me. You can see on the cover page that we're doing pretty well in our taxes collections. Bristolsmen has a history of being well over 98 percent, and our tax collector's doing a good job. We're also haven't met the expectations of our building permits quite early, so that's also good news as far as the revenue stream. Doesn't seem to be any anomalies in the budget other than we're going to have 75 degrees tomorrow, so our snow and ice budget is doing very, very well. And that's going to, you know, that's going to support possibly a discussion of looking that if we have savings in this year, maybe we can pick up some of the capital items that are being requested, purchase them now, and it won't affect the mill rate. So that'll be something we'll have to look at. I'll be speaking with Walter to see what the balance is, but it's probably going to be significant. And of course, you received an email this past week from Robin. We have full restitution on the payroll problem. We have a few other non-cash payroll problems that have surfaced in the last couple of weeks in our research, but they'll be correctable because it's within a three-year window that you can correct that without a problem. So we will, we're addressing that, and obviously, we're going to send thank-you letters to our state senators and representatives that assisted us in that situation. Last night, for those of you attended, we heard a little bit of gloom and doom with the budget, and the mayor forwarded me an article from his Capitol Report. And the governor met yesterday in private with some of the leaders, and he's, at this point, suggesting an additional $20 million in cuts to municipalities. So, and they're generally not even, so, you know, larger municipalities get the larger reductions. But $20 million, and he's also asking for the legislature to match it. So that's going to be quite a problem, so we're going to be watching out for that. And, you know, it's going to be a dire situation. And I think this year we'll be okay. As a matter of fact, we have all the budgets, and so at the end of the week, we're going to be making, we're going to look, on my office, we'll be looking very closely, line by line, to make suggestions to the Board of Finance when we have our meetings in April. But other than that, it's status quo, and we're doing okay.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to just formally thank Robyn Manuel and the rest of the staff of the Controller's Office for the outstanding job in recovering the funds. So thank you, Robyn.
She was very diligent.
Nice job, Robyn.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Glenn.
You're welcome.
Any other business? Hearing none. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Council meeting will start at 7 o'clock. Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Meeting, Tuesday, March 8th, 7:00 p.m. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask for a moment of silence for troops on active duty. Thank you. Council, please introduce themselves, starting from my far right.
Calvin Brown, District One.
Anthony Demato, District One.
Jody Zills-Gagnon, District Two.
Dave Mills, District Three.
Dave Proleski, District Two.
Mary Fortier, District Three.
Town Clerk Therese Pack.
Assistant Dawn Labella.
And I'm Mayor Ken Cottkeen. Item number two.
Approval of minutes of the regular City Council Meeting on February 9th, 2016, and the special meeting on January 21st, 2016.
Move it.
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Can I ask Mr. Blanchett to meet me in front here, please? I had to drag him here tonight. So anyone who's been driving down the boulevard has seen Mr. Blanchett walking up and down, actually, running up and down the boulevard, picking up garbage, trash, whatever's out there, for years. What also a lot of people don't know is I was, he was my vice principal, and probably doesn't believe that I'm mayor today.
Yeah.
So I have a little recognition for you, how you've done for Bristol. In recognition of Gerald Blanchett. Gerald Blanchett served our country in the Korean War, and whereas Gerald Blanchett became a valued educator in the Bristol school system following his military service, and eventually became a City of Bristol resident. Whereas, following Jerry's retirement, he dedicated himself to maintaining the cleanliness of our city-treasured Veterans Memorial Boulevard. And whereas, Jerry has religiously, no, I tried again. Whereas, Jerry has religious and self-assigned duties nearly every day for the last 20 years. Whereas, Jerry's example of selfless service should inspire all of us, young and old, to find our own unique way to give back to our communities. Therefore, I, Ken Cottkeen, on behalf of the City of Bristol, extend my sincere appreciation to Gerald Blanchett for his service to the Bristol community, and wish him all the best as he continues his life's journey. Therefore, I undoesign my name and cause the great seal of City of Bristol affixed this day of March, the year of our Lord, 2013. 2016. Thank you. I feel like I was back in high school next to him.
Yeah.
Middle school. Middle school. All right. Thank you. Public participation. See him.
Good evening. 398 Riverside Avenue. I've been following good interest about the changing in the moral boulevard into one lane each way and a bicycle lane. Couple of questions. If you change it over, who's going to patrol it and make sure people stay out of the bike lane and don't use it as a passing lane because somebody's going slow? And second of all, what's wrong with the way it is? Can't you just enforce the rules a little better down there? And my other thing is, last fall, I think we had the water problem, water shortage going on. What's the chances, Royce, getting an update on how our reservoirs are doing for the springtime and summer? If we're back to normal, we're still low. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob? Can you give us something?
Good evening, Council. Rob Longo, Superintendent of Water. We are at 98.76 percent as of this morning. So unfortunately, the way our levels go, we have to maintain two consecutive months over a threshold. The threshold was 85 percent. We hit that February 8th. So as of April 8th, we will be out of restrictions. Right now, we're still in restrictions. We ask people still to conserve as much as they can, but we should be fine.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael Dotco.
Michael J. Dotco, 116 Lewis Road. Last month, I was here, and I asked specific questions about there being changes in the southeast business parks, rules and regulations. I asked them. Okay. Prior to the meeting, I checked up on the January 25th BDA meeting, and it indicated that there were amendments made. I came here to the meeting to ask specific questions, and I asked the mayor directly, first time, were there any changes made to the regulations? And I've checked the Nutmeg Broadcast, Mr. Royce's tape things, and in muffled manner, the answer was no. I knew that something's wrong. I asked succinctly a question, again, clearly. Has there any changes been made? And the answer I got, and it has some truth to it, is, I can assure you that no laws have been broken. Okay. That's not the answer to someone's, a citizen's question, directly. Okay. After the meeting, I see Mr. Malley, and I said, ah, what's going on? I saw it. It's on the agenda. There were some changes made. And he did say there were. I got an FOI request. I filed an FOI request to see, you know, officially that they were, and you have it handed out to you. There were. Okay. Mr. Proleski is the new person on the BDA, and I don't expect it. He's a new person to the council. He can't, he's got to learn. It's a learning process. There's a lot of nitty-gritty there to know everything there. But the mayor, you did not answer a direct question. I'm asking you again, directly, a third time, succinctly. Have there been any changes made to the rules and regulations of the southeast business park? Okay. Okay. I have a FOI request.
This is your time to speak.
You're not going to answer the question.
This is your time to speak, not mine.
Okay. Okay. This is bad government. A citizen does do things a proper way, expects an answer. I know this is a corporation, really. I've got four attorneys here. We call them the Corporation Council. This is a sad reflection of government. This is on a national level. This reflects somewhat the candidates are all about. I'm not getting an answer, again. And I have an official FOI request. There were changes and amendments made. I think it's a very poor, government imposes rules and regulations on citizens, but anything that doesn't go their way will just change it to suit our purposes. A bad reflection upon the United States government. Maybe it's always been that way.
Thank you very much.
But it's sad that it continues.
Thank you.
And I still didn't get the answer to my question.
Thank you. Nancy Tula?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Council members. I'm a little concerned about that three-minute bill, but let me get to it. My concern here is a neighborhood's safety factor. We, the petitioned people in the intersection of Timber Lane and Deber Lane have had a problem for years with people not stopping on Timber Lane that are going up on Deber Lane. If, I can just show you what the intersection is. I've got some pictures here. By the way, I didn't take these today. That's the intersection. And I'm going to give one of these copies to the Corporation Council. Just quickly, we signed a petition and went to the Police Board Meeting in December. It was referred to the Traffic Commission. The January meeting, the Traffic Commission decided that it was not necessary, okay, to have a stop sign at that intersection. I was quite appalled, and we were all appalled, by the fact that they mentioned in their summary that we do have the right-of-way. However, in their last comment, they said that whoever gets to the intersection first, okay, has the right-of-way. Couldn't believe it. The fact is, okay, that there are, the other answer that they gave us at the meeting was that it's a T-intersection. If you go on to Page Three, I quickly went through some of the neighborhoods, and just in the area, there's stop signs at all these intersections. Our second issue there is an issue of the property on the east corner, northeast corner, okay, which has a large hedge. And that hedge is in violation. Okay.
Do you have a house number?
Maybe Sixth Timber Lane. Okay. There's a large hedge there, all right? And if you look on Page Four of the submitted information, the regulations are very specific as to what you can have for hedging on a corner lot. And you've got to remember that both lot frontages, okay? That lots on Deber Lane as well as Timber Lane have to abide by the setback point. I quickly walked over this afternoon. His hedge is seven feet wide, seven and a half feet high, as you can see in the picture, and it infringes in the city right-of-way or in the city 50-foot distance, four feet. So, he's already up.
That's not a police board matter. Our building officials here, we'll send zoning out there.
Right. I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah. We'll send zoning out there tomorrow to look at it and get it taken care of.
So the whole bottom issue, and I'm running out of three minutes, is it's a safety factor, okay? As a matter of fact, one of the applicants, she came down yesterday. She had to stop dead because a car came right around the corner like she wasn't there. We all have to do that. Our request is for a stop sign. I can't believe that the police department has not let us have a stop sign there when...
We will put this on the agenda for next Police Board Meeting for reconsideration.
Okay, but I'm concerned that we might not get it, and I'm just going to say this. A lot of people said, and the reason we're here is that if we don't get it, okay, and there's ever an accident there, it's going to be a major, major legal issue. And we aren't talking about an expensive item. It's a safety issue. Why let somebody get hurt or killed? That's it.
Thank you.
I'd like to take my pictures back to the sun.
Who's got the pictures?
I have pictures, yeah.
Unless they remind you of spring.
Spring is coming tomorrow.
There you go, Dave.
Good job, Dave.
So there are green folks.
Okay. Announcement, starting from my far right.
Yes, Your Honor, let's start with, let's start with the monthly reminder from the Library about AARP Foundation Tax Aid Appointments available to Bristol taxpayers with low and moderate income, with special attention to those 60 and older, taking place in the computer lab at the Bristol Public Library, continuing through April 12th. So if you need help with your taxes, you can make an appointment on Tuesdays from 8:30 to 12:30 p.m. No walk-ins accepted, unfortunately, but it is a nice service that the Library offers, and you can call them to make an appointment. So I've been mentioning that for a little while now, since February at least, and I'll continue to do that. And also, just for the record, I'm sure if anybody's been on Google today, they know that it's International Women's Day, which is an exciting day to celebrate the women in our individual lives and the leadership role that we see women continue to develop in the world, especially here in the United States. And it's an exciting time. And that's all I wanted to say on our announcements.
Councilman?
Yeah. Just want to congratulate Cindy Scoville for being elected as a new president and CEO of the Greater Bristol Chamber of Commerce, and I wish Jim Alber a nice retirement. So that's the only announcement for me.
Councilman?
Thank you. There's an annual Easter Gala at the Children's Library on Saturdays, March 19th. It's a family event with the Easter Bunny, Games, Crafts, and a magic show. There is also the annual Shamrock Swim, which is at the Dennis Malone Aquatic Center on Saturday, the 12th, is coming Saturday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And of course, next month is the annual OM Show, hosted by the older members of the Bristol Boys and Girls Club. It's the 75th annual show. It is called Encore. It's going to be April 16th and 17th, 7:30 p.m. both days, and Saturday afternoon at 1:30, and you can get your tickets at bbgc.org. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman?
None.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to piggyback on what Councilman Demato said. Our chamber is the second-largest chamber in Connecticut, and Cindy Scoville's our first female CEO, so we all wish her well from the city. Second thing is, the United Way of West Central Connecticut is having their awards dinner at the Doubletree on April 7th. They're honoring excellent individuals and companies within our town who've done a very good job for the United Way. They're honoring Roland Dumont Agency, Barnes Group, Leslie Blade, the Bristol Ending Family Homelessness Task Group, and a fellow in the banking world named Byron Shreedo. So if you want tickets, they're available at the United Way. And my last time, I promise you, this spring, West End Association Taste of Bristol, help the West End and help our local restaurants. Thank you.
Councilman?
Yes, I have a couple of things. The Bristol Historical Society is showing another classic movie this coming weekend. This time, it's going to be The Maltese Falcon. I just think these are exciting. They pick great old movies, and they do a good job with them, and they give you some of the history and background of what went on and what went into making the movie. This coming Saturday, our Democratic Council people, Calvin, Dave, and myself, are going to have office hours at the Bristol Library from 12:00 to 2:00. We've done this a couple of times in the past. Last term, just from 12:00 to 2:00, and anybody's welcome to come talk about anything they're interested in. The Senior Center, I could talk the whole meeting about all the stuff that goes on at the Senior Center, but I just want to mention a couple of things. First, they are going to have a special St. Patrick's Day Dinner on Friday, the 11th, from 4:00 to 6:00, and you do have to call the Senior Center for reservations for that. And in April, they're trying something new. They're going to have an art festival featuring the art that folks at the Senior Center have created, and they're doing it on Friday and Saturday so that those of us that are still working and not retired can show up and check out the art. That's going to be Friday and Saturday, April 15th and 16th, from 9:00 to 12:00. And this past Saturday, the Greater Bristol Labor Council had their annual Legislative Breakfast, and they honored two special people, and I just want to kind of give a shout-out to those folks. One is Representative Frank Nacastro, who has announced that he's retiring. And another is a longtime member of the Bristol Labor Council, a retired state employee, Joella Mudry. So I just wanted to congratulate them again. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have one set time of year already to start getting your Forestville Duck Race tickets. The duck race is going to be Sunday, May 1st. If you've never attended, you should. It's a fun time, waiting for your duck to waddle down the river. So we're selling tickets in the mayor's office. Tickets are $5, and urge you to stop by and pick up half a dozen of them. That's all I have. Item number five.
Ten items. Five A is to place on file the new hire report for February 2016. B to approve the tax refunds dated March 2nd, 2016. C to approval for City of Bristol to enter into tax assessment fixing agreement with Zbikowski Park Neighborhood Limited Partnership LP and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute agreement. D is to introduce amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 5-19, fees. To waive the reading of the amendments and schedule a public hearing for March 16th, 2016. E is to introduce amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 18-192. Bristol Downtown Development Corporation to waive the reading of the amendments and schedule a public hearing for March 16th, 2016. F is to introduce amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 21-140. Erection of buildings on unaccepted streets and issuance of building permits. To waive the reading of the amendments to waive the reading of the amendments and schedule a public hearing for March 16th, 2016. G is to adopt amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 5-21 dot 1, building permits and property subject to tax lien. H is to award contract 2P 1668 fuel system conversion inclusive of fuel tank removal at Northeast Middle School and LNP Hubble School to BL Companies, Connecticut Incorporated, for $21,800 and authorization to execute. I is to award contract 2P 67 architectural services relative to roof replacement at LNP Hubble School to Silver Petrosalian Associates for $29,900 and authorization to execute. And J is to award contract 201661 demolition of 104 Frederick Street to Martin LaVieiro Contractor, Inc., for $34,250 and authorization to execute.
Motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion main, second, a discussion.
Your Honor, on one item quickly, that Frederick Street House, where is that? Which one is that now?
That is one of the ones that, uh, we got the federal money to buy out that was flooded.
Oh, okay. That was damaged and flooded. Is that the one right where it bends, or is it sort of more down?
Do you know which one that is? I don't think it's the one where it bends.
No.
Good evening. If you use like the Frederick Street Bridge?
Yeah.
There's a White House next to the bridge, and then there's a, actually, there's not a, it was, they demolished, the White House demolished the house next to theirs. And then there's 104 Frederick.
Okay.
So, it's like, okay, three houses from the river.
Okay. And is it the Code Enforcement Committee that receives these contracts and goes out to bid, or is it just done in Rogers Office?
Rogers Office for this program.
Okay. No, that's fine. You don't have to, okay, that's all I need.
Yep.
All right.
Anything else?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number six, committee reports, real estate committee?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, we have several motions. The first is I hereby move the City of Bristol to accept the offer from Sterns Apartments LLC in the amount of $7,500 for city-owned property known as 5961 Stern Street on map 25 of the Bristol's Assessor's Office. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Motion main, second, a discussion.
Second.
Yes, Your Honor, just a quick, brief explanation as to whether this is. This is a property, as you know, there's a, uh, these folks have, uh, bought both large apartment buildings on the Lower Stern Street, and they've reduced the amount of, uh, of, uh, apartments in these units. I think they went from eight to four units and from six to three.
That's correct.
Okay. And now they're using this property to, uh, develop a parking lot.
Excellent.
So, that's what this is.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item B.
Let me see if I can get to it. Okay. How do I get to it? I'll get it. Hang on.
I have it if you'd like.
The next one is I hereby move to grant the United Way of West, West Central Connecticut permission to use a portion of Depot Square for a carnival run by Tofano Amusements for the period of time from April 9th, 2016 through April 17th, 2016, provided that all insurance requirements are provided to the city. I further move that this matter be referred to the Department of Public Works to determine the appropriate location of the carnival on Depot Square, and I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council Office for insurance compliance. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion main, second, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
The next one, Your Honor, is I hereby move the City of Bristol convey property known as 50 Terryville Avenue on map 22 of the Bristol Assessor's Office for $52,250 and other valuable considerations to Alex Simone. I further move that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council to prepare and review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion main, second, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
The next motion, Your Honor, I hereby move the City of Bristol convey property known as 101 George Street on map 31 of the Bristol's Assessor's Office for $80,227 and other valuable considerations to K and G Crown Properties and/or its assigns. I further move that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Motion main, second, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
The last motion, Your Honor, I hereby move to refer the request that the city discontinue a portion of Cross Street right-of-way to the Public Hearing and Assessments Committee for its consideration to the Public Works Board, the Planning Commission, and the Board of Water Commissioners for further review and recommendations as appropriate. I further move that the hearing of Assessment Committee be held as a public hearing on this continuance on June 16th, 2016 at 5:30. If we need an explanation, Walt can come up and give us an explanation if anybody needs that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Walt wants to come and talk about it.
Walter, you just tell us.
Do you have a specific question?
Just talk a little bit about it, this is the first time I'm hearing it.
It's a piece of property that's a part of the Cross Street right-of-way that, uh, the city acquired when the, uh, there was a state project to realign Redstone Hill and Cross several years ago.
Okay.
And that's the, a remaining portion of the, that right-of-way. And, uh, because it's right-of-way, the, the proper way for the city to, uh, to release it is through a discontinuance of that right-of-way. And the, and the process is, is to refer to Hearing and Assessments and, and to those, to the Board of Public Works, Water Commissioner, and, and what have you, Planning Commission for their recommendation.
So, what does a discontinuance mean in terms of, like, what does that look like? The, the rest of that street gets, like, excavated or something?
The discontinuance is, is legally the, the city's release of a portion of the right-of-way. So, the, right now, the city owns a, a very wide right-of-way at that intersection
Uh-huh.
on the, uh, that would be the north side. And so, the city would release a portion of that right, or potentially would release a portion of that right-of-way. And it would become part of the property.
Property owners.
And then the city would, uh, would be able to tax that also.
Okay.
If I may just add to that, what it's gonna do is it's gonna add a little bit of, of property to Century Spring Parking Area.
Okay.
So, that's what it's for.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
That's all I have from real estate.
Uh, committee reports starting my far left.
I have none. Thank you.
I have two, Your Honor. Um, the Salary Committee met, uh, this past month, and I have a motion. The Salary Committee unanimously recommends to the City Council to approve full tuition reimbursement to Anne Marie Sungren in the amount of $1,710, and to Samantha Partney in the amount of $4,035 upon their successful completion of one, uh, course each. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion main, second, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. I have another, Your Honor, uh, from the BDA. Uh, this motion, by the way, was already approved by the Board of Education and the Board of Public Works. Um, is to approve the deferral to construct sidewalks at 39 Business Park Drive pursuant to City Ordinance Chart, uh, Chapter 21, Section 21 dash 49. Said waiver shall be subject to the filing of a covenant on the city land records that indicates if sidewalks are constructed by the city along the adjacent portions of Business Park Drive, the cost of construction, constructing sidewalks across the property of 39 Business Park Drive will be incurred by the property owner. The recommendation of the Board of Education must also be placed in file.
Second.
Motion main, second, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Your Honor.
I have something from the School Readiness Council. Uh, many exciting, exciting things are happening with School Readiness Council. The School Readiness Council and the Bristol Early Childhood Alliance in partnership with the Parent and Child Center at Bristol Hospital have applied for the Invest Health Strategies for Healthier Cities, a project of the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and the Reinvestment Fund. They have been informed that they have been selected as a finalist for the grant and have been invited to advance to the next stage of selection process. In addition, on April 2nd, 2016, which is a Saturday, the Health Committee of the, of the School Readiness Council will be sponsoring a National Walking Day in partnerships with the Park and Recreation Department, the Board of Education, the Health Department, and BECA, Bristol Hospital, and Chapter 126 ESPN's Kids Center, the Main Street Foundation, Hartford Healthcare, the Pediatric Care Center, Shop Right, United Way, Wheeler Clinic, and the Wellness Center. The event will take place at Rockwell Park from 9:30 to 11:30. What is so unusual about this walk is that local pediatricians and health professionals will be walking and willing to answer any questions about child, about children's health. A great opportunity for families to get some exercise, have some fun, and have their questions answered about their children's health. Prizes will be available that day for all walkers. You must register and check Bristol's website on makingbristolbetter.com for details. It's a pretty exciting thing. Obviously, there's lots of sponsors, lots of people taking place or taking part in this activity. So, again, the date is April 2nd. You can walk as long as you want or as short as you want. Uh, it's, it's a two-hour walk. You don't have to walk that far or that long. But, uh, they're encouraging as many people as possible to come down with your kids and, and to walk that day. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman?
There's two, um, from the Memorial Boulevard Building Committee. The board has settled down a name. They're going to call it the Memorial Boulevard Cultural Center. And they recently registered a website. It's the M B C C dot org. There's nothing there right now. They just registered it, but keep checking back. They're going to be putting together a website. Uh, the board is moving right along, as are the architects for the building. They will be looking for volunteers in the future, so keep that in the back of your mind as well. And I just wanted to remind everyone, the board meets the second Tuesday, which is tonight, uh, and they have one scheduled for April, May, and June. It's going to be from 6:30 to 8:00 in the library, Meeting Room 1. And also, the police board, as many of you probably have read, the Traffic Division of the Police, um, Department is going to reduce Memorial Boulevard to one lane each way. They're going to repaint the road and make half of it a bike lane, the other half drivable by traffic. They wanted to do this because it looks like a mini highway, the way it is set up, and it is a park. It is under the purview of the park board. Therefore, they wanted to make it look not like a highway, reduce the speed of the cars going through. And I know people are concerned with traffic backing up, um, but I, they want everyone to remember that there is one lane entering Memorial Boulevard and one lane exiting Memorial Boulevard. And there is still ways to get around it through Riverside Avenue, which of course is Route 72, and South Street. So, they want to make the park look more like a park rather than a highway, which is why everybody was in favor of it. The police board was in favor of it. The park board was in favor of it, and of course, the Veterans Council was in favor of it as well. And that should be happening sometime in late April, early May.
Thank you. Councilman?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, something that we actually vote on tonight, uh, Hubble School Roof Replacement Project. Uh, that committee, we selected, uh, an architect, and there was three specific, um, presentations there, uh, two of which that were close in cost, and one that was, uh, relatively not even close in cost. And, uh, I like to say that the taxpayers had a win there. We were able to steer, uh, the entire committee into the right middle of the road direction to an architect that the city already has a relationship with, uh, so we can progress on the roof replacement. So, uh, I just wanna allude to that because it's kind of an offshoot type of a committee, but it's a big project. Uh, I think the ta, I think the taxpayers were represented, that we made, uh, a good selection. And, uh, I'm happy that I'm on that committee because some of the building knowledge that I have, we worked well with the Board of Education to select what I call, uh, the right architect. We also had, uh, some discussion on the ordinance committee with regards to, um, building permits. Uh, we're now gonna have the sewer and water, uh, liens on those building permits, so we're going to start to protect the city. You'll not be able to take out a permit without checking to see if you owe property taxes as well as liens on your sewer and water. So, uh, we're going to protect the city, and we're also gonna protect the taxpayers who pay, uh, their bills, so their neighbor can't take out, uh, a permit and, uh, do renovations on their house. Uh, and that's pretty standard, uh, in my opinion, in many municipalities, and I'm just surprised that it wasn't here, so I think we made the right move there. Um, something outside of committee that I want to share, um, I was kinda busy this month. Um, the mayor was able to send me to a, uh, an Eagle Scout, um, actual ceremony, uh, for Brendan McFadden. Uh, so I represented the city, uh, for Brendan. Um, we sat with the entire state delegation, both Republican and Democrat. It was actually the first Eagle Scout ceremony where the entire state delegation was there, so it was, uh, really a thing to see. Uh, and I, uh, gave Brendan, uh, the key to the city, so that was great. That was the first Eagle Scout ceremony I've ever been to. It's actually, uh, pretty interesting and a wonderful thing. I got to meet a lot of, uh, people that you necessarily wouldn't meet. Um, the second thing is, upon, uh, going to that ceremony, I was asked to speak at a Cub Scout PAC meeting at Stafford School. Uh, I was the honored guest, and I was there to tell Cub Scouts about how government works, um, what can government do to assist them, uh, how government operates. And we talked, uh, with some of the parents about how, uh, you know, voting for politicians is not just government. It's how the money comes down from government into police, into fire, into public works, into roads, into bridges. So, we had a nice, uh, discussion, and mind you, it was to fourth and fifth graders, so we had to change a few things around. But I, I think the kids really enjoyed it, and I was very honored, uh, to be in my elementary school, our motto once again, since I haven't been there since I graduated. So, uh, that's what, uh, we've been up to this month.
Thank you. Councilman?
I don't have any of my own committee reports this month, but I do have a question on this, uh, the proposed bike path on Memorial Boulevard. I don't know if you're, maybe somebody else will be able to weigh in. Are the two, are, are the lanes gonna stay the same size as they are now? Or is the driving lane gonna be expanded a bit and the, the bike lane?
Ed, or Ed or PD, whoever wants to answer this. Captain Gould's lucky he was not able to make it tonight, so he's, he's at home watching this probably.
To the best of my knowledge, Councilman, uh, the lanes are gonna be, on the left-hand side or, or the, or the medium side?
Yep.
There'll probably be a three-foot, um, fog lane. On the right side or going either way, it's going to be the bike lane. And then, uh, it's gonna shrink the, the travel lane probably about 12 feet wide, 13 feet wide. So, it's not gonna, so you're gonna have a bike lane maybe four or five feet, travel lane, and then another three-foot fog lane going down and back the other way. That's how that's gonna be designed.
Okay. And the costs associated with this are just generally painting lines on the?
Cause right now, it's, it's pretty well faded now, and we were gonna paint it either way.
Oh, okay.
So...
And the painting on Memorial Boulevard falls under the park board preview, huh?
Well, not really. Um, we'll pay for it, though. That's about doing anything we'll do. I, I mean, we, we'll go through Public Works, we'll get their people that, that design it, and we'll, we'll pay for that.
Okay.
So, the bill comes to us. Unless you deflect it to the Public Works, it will be...
Hey, I'm, I'm no longer your liaison, Ed, I can't help you. But, so from a police perspective, the public safety concerns have obviously been weighed, and you guys don't see a problem with this?
I am not privy to that discussion. I just heard the bill over.
Okay, that's fine.
It's, it's been my understanding that they've been trying to get this to happen the last few years, the PD.
The PD.
And, um, uh, Lieutenant, Lieutenant Spiros is the, is the Traffic Division, uh, he may be a person you wanna contact and then get the exact rundown.
Okay. And then, not for you two gentlemen, but from a business perspective in terms of what we're trying to do downtown and the way we try to direct people through our city to the downtown we're trying to develop, has there been any consideration to what, uh, the narrowing of traffic on Memorial Boulevard might lead to from that perspective? Has the BDA been involved in this at all?
I can speak to that.
Sure.
One of the things, as I mentioned before, remember, it's one lane in, one laid out.
Yep.
Anytime I've driven down Memorial Boulevard and, and I, my experiences can be different than others, it's never been full to capacity.
Right.
Um, so you can still drive down it, there just won't be the ability to pass other cars on it. And so, and remember, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, it's just paint. So, if it turns out a few years from now, it doesn't work out, we can repaint it.
Right.
Um, so we're not making any kind of major construction. It's just paint at this point in time. And I, I, I believe, the police believes there won't be an interruption of traffic, knowing that you can still drive down the Boulevard as well as Riverside Avenue and South Street.
Okay.
And, and just to inform the, the council, a couple of years, uh, either a year or two years, the end of the Boulevard, the Downstreet Bridge, that's going to be replaced.
Right, yeah.
So, at some point in time, uh, we'll probably not even have traffic that's gonna go through there, so...
You think that'll deflect a lot off, the replacement of the Downstreet Bridge?
It will definitely won't. Obviously, if they're not coming out, you're gonna be able to use, uh, South Street and, and Riverside, so...
Mm-hmm. Excellent, thank you, Ed.
Anything else, Councilman?
No.
All right. I just wanna add one, uh, one thing that I wanna talk about is the West End realignment is still on track. Um, the surveyors, if you've been through the West End, you see the surveyors have been out there. That's hoping to be done by the end of April, late April. Uh, then the design crews will be out there designing the actual formal, uh, plans that will realign the whole West End, uh, both cosmetically as well as safety, uh, down there. So, that's, that's still moving forward, and that's on track. Unfinished business, starting my far right.
Did, did we wanna take a minute to address some of what Mr. Dutko wanted to talk about in our public? Sorry, okay. Then no, none for me. Then no, none for me.
Uh, none for me.
None.
I have just one item, I guess it's old business. As you probably know, we've been trying to get a light fixture on Main Street with a spotlight into the parking lot. And I wanna thank Walt and thank Ray Rogazinski and the mayor and Mr. Straderman for following up on that and, and getting the light fixture, so there's now lights in the parking lot across from the Main Street so that the people can see when they come out of the establishments at night. I think that's good. I know that they're gonna check, I guess, I think they put the long, the wrong light up. But there is a light there, and it's gonna be a spotlight. And I just wanted to thank everybody involved for getting that done.
Councilman? Nothing, thank you. Councilman?
I have one thing, I'm not sure if it really is unfinished business, but it's something we have discussed before, and I just, regarding the charter revision, and I'm not sure if it's the Personnel Director who can answer the question, but I guess I'm looking for a basic explanation of the police and fire items that were brought there, and I just don't have a clear memory from last month, and if we could just review that again, because I'm looking for what change is being looked for there.
So basically, the recommendation for police and fires to take the language out of the charter altogether and put it in the ordinance by, you might remember, by collective bargaining, we have overridden much of the language through contract changes, and so the charter is no longer up to date. So we wanna take all that language and move it from the charter to the ordinance.
Okay, so is it the entire, the three sections, the entirety of the three sections?
Well, I think there's Section forty-two, there's forty-six A and B. We leave probably a paragraph in each of those sections with, with just a basic description about the department and the chief and how the appointment process works, but move everything else to ordinance.
Okay.
And last night, a charter revision, actually, the chairman asked me to work with the fire union and most likely police to, to see if there's any language that we can agree in common to present to the committee.
Okay, that's great. And so the residency requirements for the two chiefs would remain in the charter?
I was intending to take all that and move it to the ordinance.
Okay.
And just leave the appointment process in the charter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your honor, on that topic, if you don't mind, well, Ms. Ferguson is up here. So that, I'm, I'm glad that Councilwoman Fortier clarified that, because I was assuming, based on the way the last charter revision went, when the public overwhelmingly affirmed that they supported the residency requirement for the police and fire chiefs, that when this new charter revision came up and the proposal to remove some of the language and put into ordinance, that residency requirement wasn't part of it. So I wanna be clear, you're saying that your intent is to remove the residency requirements of the fire chief and police chief from charter and put it under the ordinance committee?
To, to move the language for both chiefs to the ordinance, yes.
Okay.
Their employment agreement, the residency, moving it to ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you.
That seems like a question that was just very recently settled, but by, what, was that like a two-to-one margin? Does anybody remember?
They're not making the changes, it's still gonna be in there.
Okay.
So the, the proposal is not asking for that to be removed, it's asking it to be moved.
To be moved, not removed.
Not removed, moved.
Okay. Well, then we'll see how that goes, I guess. Okay.
All right, thank you. Uh, new business, starting my far left.
None for me.
Nothing.
Nothing.
None.
None, your honor.
None.
Chair has none. Resignations.
The first resignation is from Myra Barry O'Samson from the Bristol Development Authority as a two-nine. The second is from Susan Everett from the Board of Park Commissioners, and the third is from Marguerite Peterson from the Bristol Historic District.
A motion to accept and said letters of thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Appointments. Commission on Aging to appoint Teresa Barton, three-year term to three-nineteen. Motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Bristol Property Renewal Corporation to reappoint Ellen Cosloff, to reappoint Jennifer Andrukhewitz, to reappoint Caitlin Humble, to reappoint David White, to reappoint Peter Matthews, one-year term to three-seventeen.
So moved.
So moved.
Second. Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. City Cemetery Commission to reappoint Michael Sammon, Jr., and to reappoint Deanne Leveque, three-year term to three-nineteen.
So moved.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Park Board of Commissioners to appoint Paula O'Keefe to replace Susan Everett, resigned two-seventeen sixteen, unexpired term to two-seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. School, Bristol School Readiness Council to appoint Alessa McGee to replace Markey Arroyo, resignation, unexpired term to eight-sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number eleven.
Regarding grant application to Connecticut Department of Transportation for fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars with a seventy thousand, one hundred and sixty dollar cash match regarding the Department of Aging's Elderly and Disabled Demand Response of Transportation Program, known as Dial-A-Ride Program, and authorization from mayor or acting mayor to execute, and there is a resolution to read.
May I read it?
I'll read it. It had hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application to the Connecticut Department of Transportation for fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars with a city cash match of seventy thousand, one hundred and sixty included in the Bristol Department of Aging two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget, request for the elderly and disabled demand response transportation program, also known as Dial-A-Ride Program, is hereby approved, that the mayor, Kenneth Cocaine, or the acting mayor, is hereby authorized to execute such application in any or all documents relating to this program, including but not limited to any final documents. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any consideration, any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number twelve.
Mayor, roll call vote, please.
Oh, sorry, roll call, starting my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item number twelve.
Resolution, resolution regarding endorsement of Regional Performance Incentive Program Proposal to Implement Regional Municipal Property Revaluation and CAMA Procurement Program, Standardize and Centralize Parcel Data Management and Hosting, and there is a resolution to read.
I can read that, your honor. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the City Council has endorsed the Regional Performance Incentive, RPI Program Proposal listed herein, referenced in Connecticut General Statute, Section four dash one-twenty-four S, two thousand fourteen supplement, to implement regional municipal property revaluation and CAMA procurement program, standardize and centralize parcel data management and hosting. In addition, the City Council hereby authorizes mayor Kenneth B. Cocaine or the acting mayor to act on this endorsement by signing all necessary agreements and take all necessary actions related to this proposal to enter into a binding agreement with the Office of Policy and Management according to the terms of the RPI Grant Program. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote, starting my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item number thirteen.
Yes, your honor, both mayor and court council, just so you know, your copies that my staff sent you may be missing. Item thirteen, it's another resolution. So I don't know if you have that hard copy without it, but everything that's downloaded, we have, so.
Okay, item number thirteen.
Yep. Resolution regarding approval of Second Amendment to Municipal Solid Waste Disposal and Recycling Services Agreement between the City of Bristol and Covanta Bristol Incorporated, and to waive the reading of the resolution but to include it as part of the minutes. And simply, we just need it, this roll call vote, and obviously a motion and.
Motion to approve. So moved. I'll second that. Motion made second to discussion.
I was wondering if perhaps the Director of Public Works could just give us a nutshell on this one. This is a, there was a lot of pages in our materials, and it's somewhat complicated, and I'm just wondering if we can see the big picture. Thank you.
Good evening, yes, just to give you a quick Reader's Digest version, the City of Bristol, along with thirteen other communities, entered into a waste and recycling agreement with Covanta Bristol in two thousand twelve. During the first year of that agreement, there was a diversion of some municipal waste, and the, the original agreement has a, a mechanism that the capacity that the fourteen communities have for each year is based upon the tonnage that they actually deliver the year before. And so with the, there was some factors that reduced the amount of waste that went to, to the plant for the communities the first year, lowered their capacity. And so this year, the communities are in jeopardy of reaching the new capacity. So this amendment actually protects the municipal residential solid waste, that it will be, will be able to go to the plant this year as well as the remaining life of the contract. It also expands the definition of what's residential to include apartments and condominiums,